For the arts and public places that had the council vote on it. This is something that touches all of our hearts. We have four veterans that started out on it. Three of the veterans that are on it are Vietnam veterans, and I'm a disabled Vietnam veteran. We've been there, we've seen our buddies die, and we know how it is. On the Vietnam Veterans Memorial, I have six friends on there. So Memorial Day, that touches my heart because I know these are the guys I served in Vietnam with. This will be something that the families, it's not about the veterans who worked for it, it won't be about the planning commission that okay's it, and it won't be about the city council that does it. It will be for the family. So we're hoping that we can get all of you guys, I myself, I would prefer it's up to you, I know you can have two of you be on it, I would prefer if all of you on it. You know, because if you guys want to sit in on our meetings with us, we would love to have you there. You can see where we came from and where we want to go. And if you want to put some input on it, but I'll be honest with you, as we talked about it, the design is something that the veterans came up with for a specific reason for doing it. And if you come to the meetings and stuff like I said, Alan, you can understand why we came up with that specific design. And in my heart, whatever artists come up with, and I know that you were on the Arts Commission of Seminarian, that I do not want to change that design. Add to it, yes. A little bit tweaked it here and there, yes. Whatever your expertise is, I don't have a problem with all of you joining. But this means a lot to us, and it will mean a lot to the families. So I want to thank you very much. I'm hoping this can move forward, and we can finally get this thing done. It's been sitting there, I think it's been four or five years ago, was when we basically had a groundbreaking for it, and then it died. We would like to see this done. Thank you.
May I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you think that if we were to offer to match funds, you could go out in this community and raise some serious funds?
Well, we've been trying for years, and that's the problem. That's why when Councilman Warshaw said with the Arts and Public Places, this memorial can get done with what we've raised and the $100,000 that it can be done. We started out before the Arts and Public, this is where we were going with it, to let you know. We had volunteers that was going to, the six pillars that was going to be up there, the inner core of them is going to be sheet metal. I was going to make those myself in my backyard. I've been a construction worker all my life. There's no problem for me to make them. The only thing I was asking for is pay for the material. I wasn't going to charge a dime to do it. We had people that was going to do the concrete work, we had, you know, we had people that was going to volunteer for it. But now when we go through Arts and Public Places, it has to be done differently. We're not allowed to jump in there and do that, that's why. So we don't have a problem with that, but what it does, it takes a little bit of control out of our hands because if we did match all the funds ourselves without the city's help, the more we're built exactly to the design that we wanted. Because we already had the okay for it from the city. The city's already looked at the original design that we had. And also, before I forget, when it was first brought up, we had two council people that jumped on board right away. Councilman Herford and Councilman Turry. And they were all for it, and they had money donated to it from the foundation that donated to it. So I want to thank you and make sure I mention their names because without them, we wouldn't have the money in there that we have right now. Okay? Any other questions I can answer, yes?
Has a consultant been hired?
Oh, I'm sorry, that was the Katushi Foundation that they donated $10,000 to.
Has a consultant been hired at this time?
Yeah, that's a staff question, yes. We are working with a consultant.
We only had one meeting with her.
Yeah, we met with the veterans group and her already.
We've had, we've had one meeting with her, and she sent us, gave us some ideas and stuff like that, and we've had to do some okaying on some of it. So then we're going to move forward with that.
Knowing that it's preliminary, was she happy with basic, the design?
Well, the only discussion her and I had was that, I told her I would never accept changing the design of the pillars myself. I love those pillars that way. It was something that we came up with the design. When we sat there, we, we had different designs that we came up with, and like this, and this is the one that we had four veterans that came with, with the design, and they're there for a reason, it is. So, and we said we can accept some other, you know, the different foundation, whatever we want to do on it to add to it, but the materials to put on them and stuff like that, we don't have a problem with that. But we, the design itself, the way it was set up, it, it came from within us, and it was a vision that we had, and it's a vision you can see when they showed it on the, on the grass out, it sets out there by itself. It's going to be a beautiful sight. It's going to be connected by a sidewalk from the original wall out there to it. And it's going to be beautiful when it's done.
And I might add to, to what Lloyd was commenting on about the consultant, the consultant met with us and the veterans group to get an idea of what the parameters were that they wanted to see. So in addition to the design, actually, most of what I read there, the bullet points of the components, those were written by her. So she, she gained the understanding, that's what she's going to use to go talk to, to artists. And the artist isn't necessarily, the purpose of the artist isn't necessarily to come up with a different design. Materials are a subject here that haven't been determined what the materials will be. There's a lot of things that could be added to, to the, to the design in terms of material and things surrounding or on, on this, on this design. So the framework, our idea that we're trying to, we're trying to work with is this is the framework, and then we build on it from there.
And while we appreciate your offer for all of us to be involved, the difficulty would be if you have more than two of us involved, it would have to be a public meeting.
It's up to you guys, if you guys do.
We will all be able to be involved in it as a commission.
Yeah, if you pick two of you, but myself, like I said, I want my personal opinion. I understand, but I think Rudy, I know Rudy's a fabulous artist. I've seen some of his paintings, and they're gorgeous. But if it's commissioned, you're going to be on it, it should be two of you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
For, for what it's worth, he talked about four minutes or five minutes, we asked questions back and forth, which goes beyond that barrier. But thank you for bringing that to our attention. Absolutely, wouldn't want that to happen to anyone. Thank you. The next speaker is John Solis.
Can we have the clock turned on as you request, Mr. Sir?
Yep.
I'd help under that pressure.
Absolutely. Please.
You've seen the clock off?
Yeah, please, turn the clock on.
I would request a later round of applause.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for allowing us, I need permission of staff to address you on the memorial. My name is John Solis. I've been a veteran, was a leader for 37 years, and I am a Vietnam veteran. I think Lloyd covered most of the facts on this program. It has been, it was brought forth in front of the city council back on September 21st, 2010. Almost 40 years ago, at that time, the city council authorized the construction of the privately funded Veterans Memorial Wall in the location of the shelter here in the courtyard. This memorial will honor the West Caribbean veterans that have killed in action since World War II up to date. So since 2010, a group of dedicated veterans, led by Lloyd Johnson, George Ogden, Glenn Kennedy, and myself, have been working very hard and dedicated, trying to raise money to build this memorial. Just recently, on February 4th, 2014, is one of the city council directed staff to look into using the Public Arts Works Fund to help us out. And this is what's been bothering for you tonight. Today, the veterans of foreign wars post 8/6/20, which George is the commander, has identified 18 individuals who have been killed in action. One soldier listed as Special Support Fourth Class, Joel Michael Sigal, an Army medic, was awarded the Distinguished Service Cross, Post-Hemicycle, for action during the Vietnam War. We would like, by his name, to put in the FC, because this is the second highest award just below another one. These soldiers made the greatest sacrifice for their country. They were casualties of war, but the greatest casualty is being forgotten. That's why we're here.
That's why our efforts for this memorial, for we were soldiers once, young and brave. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anything further on this subject?
Yes, sir. Chairman, I do have a card you have on the study.
You do? I beg your pardon. Come right up here and speak to us.
I think.
Oh, I think it was on item three, but that's fine.
Yeah, I screwed up, so that's who you're working with.
Excuse me, I want to thank my colleagues for coming up and speaking. Sorry, my voice is off, you and I must be at the same party. My name is George Ogden, I'm the commander with the Veterans of Foreign Wars, as was explained to you earlier by John Solis. First off, I want to go ahead and make sure that we understand that this is a memorial, and I appreciate you saying monument. The monument is really huge and very expensive, and we're trying to really keep the cost down on this. I'm going to give you a little bit of a history on what took place and how we got this thing started. Glenn Kennedy basically came up with the idea of making sure that we had a memorial. We have a veterans wall here. It was brought to my attention also that we're probably the only city in the San Gabriel Valley that does not have a memorial for our veterans. And this, we felt we could make a move on and make happen here in this city to honor our veterans that have given the ultimate sacrifice. And I'd like to thank Glenn Kennedy, Lloyd Johnson, Mistress Elise, who recently came on for putting in their time, and a lot of members of my BFW that have worked to raise some money. Also, I'd like to thank Jeff Anderson over here, as long as Shanayanzi, Chris Freeland, and the supporting council, new and old, but without them, we wouldn't be to the point that we are right now. When I first made this design and the concept, I paid for some renderings that came forward to us, and they were unacceptable because it turned out to be a monument. We wanted a memorial, okay? When Glenn Kennedy came to me, he worked very hard trying to get people to make commitments for donations. We had a number of places that wanted to, or a number of businesses, excuse me, that said that they were going to make a commitment. We also had quite a few number of developers that said they were going to come forward. But unfortunately, probably, I'm guessing, the economic status of today, these funds did not materialize, and they weren't delivered. I sent out 60, excuse me, I sent out 64 letters requesting donations and relating to the fact that they may have made that consideration earlier in a verbal commitment. I called a number of times, and it just wasn't in their books, and so that money never came out. We recently donated over $4,000 at a city council meeting. The following side, the city council meeting, we donated over another $700 towards this fund. And we did it right here, just to make sure that everybody knows where our money's going to that we raised for them. And, you know, one of the concerns that we had is to make sure that we didn't use any tax-based money from the city of West Covina. And I wanted to make sure that the public funds that's being paid in, the public art funds, is actually being paid in by developers. This is not tax money. And what I, what I now enjoy is the fact that some of the developers that have reaped here in this city, and they are now indirectly being able to help donate towards this, and I want to make sure that we do have that clarification, that we don't have our tax money is being paid for this, and it's public funds. With that basically being said, you know, I just want to thank a couple of the groups that did respond, that was kind of interesting to me, and which I didn't even send them letters. And we had the Rotary Club, they made a donation, the Lions Club made a donation, Athens Disposal, I don't want to say they made a small donation, they made a donation. And the Women's Club of West Covina, they came forward and they donated, and I want to thank them. So with the city having roughly, I believe approximately $13,000, is that correct? And the money that we donated to them is roughly about $4,500. That was about half of the target that we wanted to get to if we had to do it all ourselves. But the way things are being set up now, we're probably going to have to use some general contractors and stuff like that to get this going. So I appreciate the efforts that you have stated here about wanting to be involved with our committee and understanding what you're saying. You can still sit out in the audience and not be even part of that, but I have an open invitation anytime we have these meetings going on. And please come on down and see how hard these guys behind me have worked and the veterans organizations and stuff that are involved. So at that, I want to thank you very much for taking the time and listening to my two other colleagues out here.
Thank you.
You guys have a pleasant evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions, George?
If you have any questions, go ahead and ask them.
Yes, we have a question.
Yes. George, could you let us know when you meet, what dates of the month, so maybe some of us would like to attend?
I most certainly will not. I'll let Jeff and Chris, we're going to take care of that.
Okay, because I was going to volunteer to help you raise money.
Betty, when I find out, I will go ahead and make sure that you, you're notified, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions on the project?
Let me ask you the question I asked earlier. If, if this commission, within its ability to provide funding through the Arts and Public Places Funds, were to say to you or anyone else, we will match dollar for dollar up to some amount, do you think that might help your fundraising?
I would, in some instances, I would say yes, but with the non-response that I got and the great disappointment that I had with some of those people that I thought would really commit to their word, I, I can't really answer that. I would think that it would, I really do. And I, I think it would be a nice gesture, but if the funding isn't out there that they want to donate because of whatever their budgetary concerns are right now today, at that point there, I don't know how to handle what they're going to be doing. And I was really surprised with some of the developers that didn't come forward because I heard their commitments as well and talked to some of them out in the parking lot. Still waiting, so.
Okay.
Are there any other questions, ladies and gentlemen?
Thank you, George.
Thank you very much, sir.
I, I think the issue before us, asked by staff, is to decide how we want to participate in this, whether we want to have a two-member subcommittee, or whether we want to wait and deal with it as a whole, or some other thing.
Yes, that, and I would say, I think it was stated earlier, the commission will deal with it as a whole.
Right.
Even if there's a subcommittee, those subcommittee members will deal with it as a whole, just, just as we do with the Subcommittee for Design Review, if they get appealed in that setting. So the question is, is there's, is there two members, or I guess theoretically, if there was only one who was interested, that person could sit in on it too. And I think it's just up to the planning commission to decide if they want, if they'd like to designate one or two members of the subcommittee to, to sit in when we meet with the, the members of the, the veterans group to discuss the artist qualifications.
Well, I might, I might say that in addition to my interest in Rudy joining this effort, though he's not a commissioner, Betty came to every Arts Commission meeting that we had because she was there for Rudy, that this group might consider Betty ought to be one of those members, if she will, and hopefully then she would, when she can, bring Rudy with her. Any thoughts on that?
I'm perfectly okay with that, and I'll do whatever I can, you know, to, you know, provide my input and support in any way.
I would go along with that, and again, if there's anything we can do as far as the committee, I'm sure we'd all want to get involved and help with the memorial. Thanks. I would propose Betty and yourself, as far as the two planning commissioners at this time.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have that, Jeff. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Item three is the Planning Directors' Modification, 1408, a category of girl exemption, the applicant's Catherine Reinhardt for Cole Real Estate Investments at Eastland Center. The request has to do with painting palette for the Eastland Shopping Center.
Associate Planner Ron Garcia will be presenting that report.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the commission. The applicant is proposing to complete the exterior painting of the facades of the inline buildings located within the Eastland Shopping Center. The facade, just to give you a short history and timeline of the modifications at Eastland. First, Walmart was painted in the summer of 2012, as well as Target was painted in the summer of 2013. The Avenue Shops located along Workman Avenue were painted in 2010. In the near future, staff is, will be working with Eastland in further exterior modifications to the former CVS building. And I'm sure that many of you have seen the activity taking place there. Again, located on the corner of Citrus and Workman. Those should be submitted to staff for review very shortly. The new building colors provide for a variety of shades that will accent the articulation and the facade of the buildings. The exterior of the buildings will include a mixture of earth tone paint colors, as you can see in the, in the slide. Those colors include yellows, cinnamon, brown, and light champagne. The applicant has provided some colored elevations. This elevation is looking south, which includes those stores, Office Depot, Marshall's, Ashley, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, Dick's Sporting Goods, Ross &amp; Burlington. The next elevation is looking north, which includes, it's shaded out, but it's Target. And again, as indicated, Target was, was painted earlier. That elevation includes Dick's and Bed Bath &amp; Beyond and Ashley Furniture here. In summary, the facade colors will emphasize articulation and detail and modernize the elevation of the buildings. In conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the Planning Directors' Modification, subject to the conditions included in the staff report. The applicant is present. If you'd like any further questions, that concludes staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
She's present as well. I am Andrew Snedeker. I'm with the same team, Cole Real Estate. As you can see, we are wanting to repaint the facade, new color palette. I'm sure you've been to the center and seen that it's got some non-uniformity to it. So our goal is to resynergize it, give it some conformity with our national tenants, maintain the branding that they have. Yeah, that's it.
None, other than just, I mean, I like the conditions of approval. Seems like a lot to comply with, but we would really appreciate all those that-
Absolutely.
Helps keep it up. I'm sure you guys would like that too, it's your property.
Yeah, yeah, we've done, in 2013, we completed well over a million dollars in parking lot work out there. And our goal is to make it one of your gems.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have any speed bumps left, or use?
We do.
We like speed humps.
We, there's some verbiage there that we can work out. But we, if there are concerns with what is there, we can address those with you guys. They are, I was there just before I came over here, and they are more of a bump than-
I thought there were a few left, Jeff.
Yeah, there are, yes.
There are some nice speed humps there, too.
Correct.
Be nice for our police vehicles, our fire vehicles, and frankly, for any of the rest of us.
Absolutely, we'll address it.
Can deal with a hump a lot easier than we can, that jolting sensation, even at a slow speed. I have another question. That is, on the front page of this beautiful rendering that you provided us, I see a brown space called 24,648 square feet.
The former CVS, correct.
It used to be Office Depot, didn't it, or no?
Oh, on the lower level, on the outlines, yes. Former Office Depot, who relocated over Jason 2 Albertson's.
And what's going in there?
We have, I'm, actually, I'm not sure. Our leasing team, there is activity there, and I'll have to get back to you. I believe we do have an executed lease with a tenant.
There are citywide rumors that Walmart's going to expand. And so that raises the question. You baited it to me when I saw that color there, and I thought, oh, that's interesting.
I don't, I'm not sure, I don't, I haven't heard Walmart, they haven't been in the mix.
And the shadowed Target that's shown also is consistent with another question that's going through some people's minds as to what your long-term relationship is with Target. I think that the answer I heard from staff was that it's shadowed because you've already painted recently.
Correct.
Don't intend to continue to repaint it.
The way that, I am familiar with their lease, the way their lease stays is they're responsible for a building exterior.
Okay.
So they painted it last year and curtailed it to our color palette that we have. We've curtailed it to them as well.
Do you have any thoughts you'd like to clarify for the community on tenure of Target?
Long term.
Okay, good.
No issues with them.
Good. Thank you.
No problem.
Appreciate that, thank you. What's the, what's the issue you'd like the planning commission then to do?
Well, just a vote, just a motion, a second, and a vote to approve the, to approve the planning director's modification.
Do we have a motion? Okay, and a second?
Second.
Do we need a resolution number? That's the one, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right, you have it. Thank you. Item four is a study session on donation drop boxes.
On March 4, 2014, earlier this month, the city council held a public hearing to review the proposed code amendment establishing standards for donation drop boxes. The planning commission had held a study session on November 11 and a public hearing on January 28. At that discussion on March 4, the city council sent the code amendment back to the commission for further study. The city council requests that the planning commission consider the placement of donation drop boxes at religious facilities. In the report, staff provides the standards that were recommended by the planning commission back on January 28, so page one and two, and going into page three, provides those standards. We wanted to remind you what standards were, were recommended before we moved into the discussion on what, on ways to address the issue that the city council had, had brought up. So at that meeting, the council discussed the proposed code amendment. It was mentioned that at least one religious facility in the city has a donation drop box on their property for temporary periods. In an effort to address that circumstance prior to adopting the new code, the city council requests that the planning commission consider the situation. In reviewing the issue, staff also believes that some nonprofit businesses, and I think we may have discussed this some of our, our study sessions, but some nonprofit businesses such as Goodwill may also have donation drop box-like facilities on their properties. So based on that information, the following alternatives are available to the planning commission to address the issue of donation drop boxes at religious facilities and/or nonprofit businesses, business locations. And this is kind of set up like we usually have the chart. We didn't do a chart in this situation because it's just one issue, so. But these are the four options that, that staff believes are available to the commission to address that. Number one would be to exempt religious facilities from donation drop box requirements. Number two would be to exempt donation drop boxes for nonprofit businesses and religious facilities, which place and operate their own donation drop boxes on their own property where they operate. Number three would be to require an administrative use permit for donation drop boxes for nonprofit businesses and religious facilities, which place and operate their donation drop boxes on their own properties. And then number four would be to require that religious facilities acquire a temporary use permit for temporary donation drop boxes on their property. And when staff looked at those, we, we kind of felt like that, that option number two might be ideal. And let me kind of discuss why we are suggesting that. If we recall how this whole code amendment started, one of the main purposes of the code amendment was to ensure that donation drop boxes are well maintained. We were finding in the community that people were dropping off donation drop boxes and then coming back a month later and picking up the stuff. And meanwhile, nobody was cleaning up situation. Property owners were finding them on the property without anybody even requesting them being placed there. So that was the number one issue, the maintenance of them. And so the recommended option two, which would be for religious facilities and nonprofits which operate on that site, both of which would have, we'll start with the nonprofits. They're going to be open probably six, sometimes seven days a week. So they're going to have employees on site that can and will maintain the drop-off area. In religious facilities, you may not have somebody on site every day, but you're going to have them at least weekly and probably several times during the week. And members also wanting to make sure that the members and anybody who works for the function of the church facility are going to want to keep their, their site clean. So that is staff's reason for recommending option number two, which would exempt religious facilities and nonprofits if those are located on their own property. So they couldn't place it on another property, Goodwill would have to have it on their property. So that is staff's recommendation in regards to, to, to that issue. We had two other things that I want to bring up before we have, go back and probably open up for the commission to discuss that issue. After we brought it to the city council, there was two other issues that came up. One, as we looked at the definition, we noted that there probably should be another sentence added, which would say, "The term donation drop box does not include any such box located inside of a building or structure." So there may be some confusion if some, it seems like I heard some people talking about, well, Toys for Tots boxes, you know, is that a donation drop box? Well, because they're cardboard. Well, I've seen, I've not ever seen one of those outside, that was left outside overnight. Generally, those are inside of a building and they wouldn't, they wouldn't be part of this issue. Target or a grocery store, or the city hall, or another office building wanted to have those, they could have them inside their lobby, that's not a problem. So that's the first thing. And I do want to apologize because it wasn't until this morning when I was, or this afternoon when I was looking at the staff report, I realized that somehow we got a cutoff between page four and page five, and I didn't get all that in the staff report. So the, what is being recommended, being added, I don't think is written in your staff reports, but it's there on the screen before you tonight. The term donation drop box does not include any such box located inside of a building or structure. That would be added to the end of the definition there. The second one would be just adding another development standard that says, "Graffiti resistant coating shall be used on approved donation drop boxes to assist in deterring graffiti," which is a standard condition we use for signs and other kinds of things. You've probably seen it on precise plans. So that seems to be something we could easily add. So if the planning commission reaches an agreement on what, on the way to address the religious facilities and nonprofits, then we would next schedule a public hearing again for the planning commission. And subsequent to that, it would be forwarded back to the city council at a public hearing for their review. That concludes staff's presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Then let's open it up to any comments you might have about directions we could go. Jeff proposed four different possibilities that we can take a look at. Would you mind putting that one back up again, Jeff? There we go, thank you. And I think staff's recommending the item two.
Correct, number two.
That is before us. We had a lot of discussion the first time we dealt with drop boxes, including, I think, some discussion about nonprofits or business, businesses that had drop boxes. But I think, I think perhaps I can see the sense in, in that, so it would have my support, whatever you think.
I agree. I think numbers three and four would be unnecessary work. And for nonprofits and religious facilities, I think two is appropriate.
I, excuse me, I also agree on a number two.
I know we've had discussion on a couple of occasions regarding the drop boxes and some of the issues. And I would certainly support option number two at this time.
Jeff, since it's a study item, do you want a motion to that?
No, we don't, I don't, that's pretty clear.
Yeah, all right, fine.
You just may have to convince Dawn, but, you know, there's four of you and one of him, so you should be all convinced. Yeah, so I will go ahead and take your direction there. And, well, I guess I should ask, I think I already understand, the other two items, everyone's okay with adding those other two items, too? So we'll, we'll get that done. We'll hopefully be bringing this back at the April 22 planning commission meeting.
And item five is earthquake faults, something we all have an interest in, I'm sure, as we all await for that day when the big one arrives. Jeff?
Yeah, last fall, Commissioner Minafi requested that staff schedule a study session to provide information on earthquake fault review in relation to development projects. And since that time, there has been some relevant newspaper articles, specifically in the LA Times, it was probably in January, I think, where there was some discussion about that. So it is a relevant topic. Earthquake faults are a common geological feature in Southern California, as I think we're all aware. Thing to know, understand about earthquake faults is generally some are considered active and some are inactive, similar to situation that you might have with volcanoes or other geographic features. The Alquist Priolo, which I'm not sure if I'm saying that, and I'm not sure why legislators with odd names are always the ones that sponsor legislation. You know, it's never Johnson Smith, you know, it's Alquist Priolo. So the Alquist Priolo Earthquake Fault Zoning Act was passed by the California State Legislature in 1972, following the 1971 San Fernando earthquake. The act required that the state geologists compile maps indicating the location of active faults to prevent the construction of buildings used for human occupancy on, on the surface of active faults. So that's what that, that Alquist Priolo legislation did. Before a new project is permitted, cities and counties require a geological investigation to demonstrate that the proposed buildings will not be constructed on active faults. So the California Department of Conservation provides the maps, and the state geologist is under the California Department of Conservation. And that website includes a list of cities that are affected by the Alquist Priolo earthquake fault zones, and West Covina's not on that list. There's, I didn't count the number of cities, it's probably around 100 cities that are on that. It's a fairly extensive list, but not, you know, in context with the number of cities in California, it's a, it's a smaller percentage. When a new project is proposed by an applicant, and from time to time, we get projects, whether they residential, commercial, those kind of projects that come before you for review, the project is required to comply with the California Environmental Quality Act, which I think you're all familiar with, the CEQA. The initial study that's done to determine the, or to analyze the, the project includes a checklist of categories that must be analyzed. One of those categories is geology and soils. The initial study must provide an analysis of earthquake fault lines and impacts of ground shaking. So, and I provided, that's on attachments two, three, and four, sections of those environmental initial, what we call initial studies that led to the environmental determination. And you'll see that there's checklists on there, and the checklists are the same. What, what, and so you, you look at it and you determine whether there's an impact. Well, actually, you do a study, and the study is below. And then based on the study, you determine if there's an impact, if there's not an impact, if the impact could be mitigated. So that's how that system works. And, and that works the same way with any category of, that is reviewed under, under the CEQA initial study checklist. In this case, we're talking about geology, and so there's two specific things there. One, it says in I there, the first one under A, "Rupture of a known earthquake fault as delineated on the most recent Alquist Priolo earthquake fault zoning map issued by the state geologist for the area based on other substantial evidence of known fault referred to the division of mines and geology." So that's the question it's asking. So, and if you look down, you'll see- So that's the question it's asking, so, and if you look down, you'll see there's response that's, that's prepared by, by generally by an environmental consultant that's hired to do that and staff reviews it and it's, they're available for your review because in, in effect, the preparation is done by the consultant and then in the name or authored by the, the staff, provided to the commission and if the commission is the authoritative body, in other words, if you're, you're approving the project, then you're the ones that are certifying that the environmental documentation is done. We prepare, but you, you're the ones that are certifying, that's why you're passing a resolution. If it goes to the council, then the council is the one that certifies it. So it, it's certainly within your realm to discuss those issues and, and make sure generally there's an environmental consultant here and if there's an issue, we can get the, the geologists to come and so those things are open for discussion at part of those hearings. So I just wanted to, to make sure everyone was informed on that. Lastly, it should also be noted that the general plan of a city is required to have a safety element and the safety element includes discussion of hazards, including seismic safety and fire and flooders, a couple others that are included in that discussion. So as attachment five this evening, I provided for you the current general plan's safety element and as I think most, if not all of you are aware, the City Council has given direction to staff to begin the process of hiring a consultant to prepare a, a general plan update and we'll, and that, we believe that'll take about two years, once we've hired that person, the planning commission will be very involved in that. We will be having expert people who are becoming and preparing things, it'll be a good time for question, for people who are, know those, those types of, know geology and the Alquist Priolo and earthquake fault lines very well. So that's, that brings me to the conclusion of the report and be happy to answer any questions at this time.
My, my reaction to the materials you provided were, that it didn't show me much about West Covina. Now, you start out with the dealing with the definitions of major faults and minor faults and based on historic facts that have been around for millenniums but may not have anything to do with tomorrow. And the, the charts that are showing to us, just basically, it seems to me, ignore West Covina because of that, because we're not one of those 105 cities. But if we're going to talk about a general plan inclusion that deals with earthquake faults, I would certainly like to have some kind of information that's more detailed and more specific about West Covina. Is there a way that we can attain that?
I believe the ans, I believe the answer is yes. Now, I, I cannot tell you exactly what we're going to go into in the general plan because partly that's, it's not up to me. I, I set up the process and I help provide the discussion, but I'm not the one who's going to decide what's in the general plan. So anymore, so everybody's going to have a hand in that, but what I would say is that yes, when we do the safety element, there, those are the types of discussion that we will have. We're just on the verge of, of starting that process, so when we get there, I don't know, I don't have an answer and, and I, we don't have that information right now because the last time it was studied for the city was 1984, 85, when this current general plan was, was prepared.
The last, the last major effect in West Covina of the Whittier was around 87 or 80, somewhere in there, as I recall?
Yes, I think, I think that's right. I think the earthquake was 87. What I don't know is if we've had any effects from some of the other earthquakes that have been in the vicinity since then.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know.
Any?
Wouldn't you think that once we have a consultant come in, that we could get those answers?
Yes, that, that is what I believe, yes.
And would be the proper time to get that answer?
That will be the, the, yes, there, and you can see in the, in the safety element, there were some maps that were prepared and I'm not, I believe there'll be mapping that will be part of the new safety element that, and if, I haven't looked at one of those, but you know, if we wanted fault lines inactive or active, that could be something that the city could request and make sure it's in there. I'm not sure that would be all that difficult for someone with the expertise and the knowledge of where to find that information.
It's been probably over a year ago, but I think it was from Caltech, I had, saw a fault line of the different faults in the area and it's, there are hundreds of fault lines, but I was pleasantly surprised. I don't recall any fault line that was really within a mile or two miles of West Covina. Big fault line in Whittier, of course, but I think it was, I think that study was by Caltech, so I don't know if that's a consultant where we do it, but I would certainly be interested as my fellow commissioners.
That's, that's the difficulty is, is they're looking globally at what might be the most significant things. It seems to me, I shouldn't say that, I don't know what they're looking at, but my guess is that that's where, where they're constrained in terms of the number of hours they have, the amount of dollars they have to spend, that they're looking at major things that they think might happen. And, and I think we're interested in our city and, and so how we can move from one to the other. I hope, I hope Betty has a finger on it, that that's something we can spend some time talking about with the right people. And the action you're looking to?
There will be no action on this, it's basically receive and file.
All right.
So you don't need to take an action.
Any further questions of staff?
I'd just like to thank my fellow commissioner for bringing this up. I know it's been a concern for a while and I think it's a good point looking out for the city and also the citizens, so I'd like to thank my fellow commissioner.
Well, one of us is leaving and going north, so, you know. Anybody out here that would like to speak on this subject while we're, while we have it open? Okay. Then, then thank you for, for the staff report and we'll look forward to, to moving forward. Thank you.
I'll come back with a lot of information from the Planning Commissioners Academy, so you can all look forward to that.
All right, the, the next item is continuation of oral communications. That's for anyone who has not spoken, who wishes to speak. Okay. And the next one would be commission reports and comments and miscellaneous items. This is a time when any member of a commission may bring a matter to the attention of the full commission that is within the scope of duties assigned to the commission. Any item that was considered during the agenda is not appropriate for a discussion in this section of the agenda. No commission discussion or action can be considered at this time. If a commission desires to discuss an issue raised by a speaker or taken in action, the commission may vote to agendize the item for a future meeting. Anyone wish to make any comments? Okay, planning directors report.
We have, right now, we don't have any items scheduled for April 8th, so we may not be having a meeting then, but we definitely have items for April 22nd.
And any city council action we should be aware of?
The City Council at the, at their last meeting did initiate a code amendment to look at medical marijuana dispensaries, so we'll be bringing a study session back. I don't know if that's going to make it in April, but probably in May, we bring a study session back to discuss that and get you familiarized with what, what they'd like to see the commission provide for them in that regard.
If there are no other matters, we entertain a motion to adjourn?
First?
If we don't require a vote, we are adjourned.